All right, let's call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Tuesday, November sixth fifteenth two thousand twenty-two at six oh one P M. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted on Friday, November eleventh at Home Tony's Hardware, Milton Pigly Wiggly and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have an agenda. Pledge of allegiance. I think it's Eric Snipes. All right, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Is there anybody signed in? Is there anybody wanting to sign in and comment? All right, we will move on to mayoral proclamations, which is really kind of exciting because we have some elder persons that are gonna help me tonight. And the first one will be Elder Person Stockman reading the National Veterans and Military Families Month. Thank you.
Okay. Whereas this month, our nation honors the strength and sacrifices of families, caregivers, and survivors of our veterans and current service members. They may not wear uniforms, but their service is essential to our national security and the character of our nation. We owe them a debt of gratitude we can never fully repay. And whereas constant tours, deployments, and rotations are difficult for our military families, we marvel at the devotion of our military families and their resilience to uproot their lives every few years and move to new communities. We honor the stalwart courage and resolve of veteran families caring for their loved ones when their service in uniform concludes. We grieve alongside families of fallen who have lost a piece of their soul. That is why we must take so seriously the sacred obligation to prepare and equip our service members when we send them into harm's way and to care for them and their families when they return home. And whereas to be a veteran or a service member is to have endured and survived challenges, most Americans will never know. To be the family of one of those proud patriots is to sacrifice more for our country than most Americans will ever give. During National Veterans and Military Families Month, we pay homage to the unrelenting bravery and dedication of all who will wear the uniform and to the unwavering love and support of all who serve alongside them. Families who put their lives on hold so our military can hold the line represent the best of America, and we will always remember what they do for our nation. Now therefore, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, does hereby proclaim November twenty-two twenty-two as National Veterans and Military Families Month. She calls upon the people of the City of Milton to honor veterans and military families with appropriate ceremonies and activities.
And I will sign this the fifteenth day of November two thousand and twenty-two, and I just wanna say that was absolutely excellent. And we are very proud of all of the veterans and the military families in our city and especially proud of Elder Person Stockman, who is a veteran. Thank you. Our next proclamation will be Small Business Saturday. It's November twenty-sixth two thousand and twenty-two, and Elder Person Linda Clark will read that for us.
Whereas the government of Milton, Wisconsin celebrates our local small business and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-two point five million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent ninety-nine point seven percent of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for sixty-two percent of net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five. And small businesses employ forty-six point eight percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas seventy-nine percent of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their communities on Small Business Saturday. Seventy percent report the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently owned retailers, and sixty-six percent report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas fifty-eight percent of shoppers reported they shopped online with small business, and fifty-four percent reported they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or cafe on Small Business Saturday in two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas Milton, Wisconsin supports our local businesses that create jobs and boost our local economy and preserve our communities. And now therefore, Mayor Anissa Welch, City of Milton, does hereby proclaim November twenty-sixth twenty-two as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate you reading that, and I will sign this the fifteenth day of November two thousand and twenty-two. Great job, both sides. All right, so let's move right along to the next item on our agenda. Approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and second. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a conditional use permit for Charter Next Generation.
So Charter Next Generation has submitted a conditional use permit to construct a facility greater than one hundred thousand square feet and a facility that is in excess of fifty feet in height. This is for their planned development located along Vicarman Road on the city's far east side in the Crossroads Industrial Park. Earlier today, the Plan Commission met, held a public hearing regarding the conditional use permit, and unanimously forwarded a favorable recommendation for a conditional use permit to the Common Council. Additionally, the Plan Commission approved the site plan for Charter Next Generation. So the council's action is really is only on the conditional use permit and not on the site plan, but nonetheless, it's important to note that their site plan was approved unanimously as well. So with that being said, I see some representatives from Charter Next Generation out in the audience. If you have questions for them, they certainly would be available probably to answer those questions. If not, the city administration would recommend approval of the conditional use permit for Charter Next Generation to construct a facility larger than a hundred thousand square feet and in excess of fifty feet in height, as also recommended by the Plan Commission.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Charter Next Generation Incorporated conditional use permit to construct a building in excess of one hundred thousand square feet in size and in excess of fifty feet in height. Say it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. And that's all the business we have for Charter.
For Charter Next Generation.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thanks, guys.
Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash five zero three, a request to rezon property along Arthur Drive from B two to R four.
So as you may recall, just a few meetings ago, the City of Milton purchased the property, subject property along Arthur Drive through the Rock County Tax foreclosure process. This property, similar to the one to the north of it, has long been split zoned, which is actually incongruent with our zoning ordinances. Now that we are the owner, we can be the applicant as well for the rezoning process, so we have forwarded a rezoning request for this property to rezone the entirety of the property to R four, which is consistent with the development in and around that site as well as consistent with our comprehensive plan. This is not directly in relation to the next item on the agenda, but even if that item does not move forward, it would still be the city's preference to have the property rezoned R four as to eliminate the nonconformity with their zoning ordinances due to the split zoning. Similarly, we did this on a property just north of Arthur Drive, but that applicant provided that request as they are the new owner of the site, so this would be the same process.
Questions or comments?
I would make a motion to approve ordinance number two zero two two five oh three. Waive the second and third reading and adopt.
Second.
Flawless. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a conditional use permit request along Arthur Drive.
So in relation to, but not directly correlated with the previous item, now that the city is the owner of the property and it has officially been rezoned, we have a developer who is interested in purchasing that site from the City of Milton and developing that site with multifamily residential structures. By ordinance, our four-zone district requires a conditional use permit if the density of the development is greater than four units. The owner or the proposed development calls for two ten-unit buildings to be constructed, so therefore a conditional use permit would be required in order to allow that type of development to occur. They have not officially submitted a site plan, and we are in current negotiations on a TIF development agreement. So I would ask that if the council is in favor of granting the conditional use permit, it would be do it would be done so with the contingency that a TIF development agreement is executed. The Plan Commission also reviewed this and held a public hearing earlier today and also approved this unanimously with the favorable recommendation to the Common Council. So city administration would concur and recommend approval of the conditional use permit contingent upon the successful negotiation and execution of a TIF development agreement with Next Generation Housing, no relation to Charter Next Generation films.
Any questions or comments?
Were they interested in three-bedroom at all?
I did not have that conversation with them, but it seemed as they have a model that works for them, so they have brought forth this plan. The fact that there are one bedrooms likely means that they may be more affordable than some of the units that are available. I'm not sure what their rental rates are, so there is probably a give and take on that.
Do we have parkland dedication or fees?
They would be, they would be due a parkland dedication fee, which would be, which is incorporated in the draft TIF development agreement.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit be granted to allow for the construction of multifamily structures with greater than four units, subject to the rezoning of the property to R four, contingent upon the successful negotiation of a TIF development agreement with Next Generation Holdings LLC.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right. We're getting closer to our karaoke night.
This is all news to me.
Discussion and possible action regarding number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-eight, adopting the two thousand twenty-three City of Milton annual budget. We've been waiting for this all year.
Yeah, I don't have a big fancy presentation tonight. This is this is the same budget that was presented to you two weeks ago. There has been no changes as we don't anticipate any changes. So therefore, we are in a position to adopt the budget formally through Resolution twenty-two-two twenty-eight. We held the public hearing two weeks ago and haven't had any additional comments since then. So therefore, we would be recommending the approval of or approval of Resolution twenty-two-two twenty-eight, which formally adopts the budget for the City of Milton for fiscal year ending December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three.
So the only comment I would have on this is that in the application process for our nonprofits, there were some requirements, and I might forget some of them, but of having a strategic plan presented, and it's not that you cannot pass the budget, allocating funds to the nonprofits that haven't submitted a strategic plan. But you could consider having a contingency before they're actually paid out those funds for them to submit a strategic plan. Mark is thinking on this, because it was just part of the the conditions in the application process. It's not that you have to do it, but it was something that we did this year to make sure that things in this area were more objective and fair to everybody.
I think that we weigh that for right now, since we didn't only gave them a few months to try to figure that out. And that way they didn't have more warning for next year, and on that note, I would go ahead and pass a motion to have a motion to approve the Resolution twenty-two-two twenty-eight, adopting the two thousand twenty-three City of Milton annual budget as written.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? We have a budget for next year. All right, discussion and possible action regarding two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five police union contract.
So the current three-year police union contract with the Milton Police Department expires on December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two. Over the fall, the city administration met with the police union negotiation team and really, really expeditedly tentatively agreed on a union contract that is presented this evening. The police department then held a meeting of their membership and ratified this contract. So the last step in the process then would be for the Common Council to formally approve the police contract, which would commence on January first of two thousand and twenty-three and run to December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the police contract effective January two thousand twenty-three to December two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible direction regarding the waste oil tank located at six twenty West Madison Avenue.
So as the council may recall, a few meetings ago, Director of Public Works, Mark Langer, noted that the Public Works Committee had recommended the closure and removal of the waste oil collection site located behind the current Milton Fire Department at the old Public Works Garage. Mark has gone out and received quotes from contractors to have that facility removed and is recommending approval, sorry, opened up the wrong document, is recommending that the Common Council accept the bid, approve the Shaper Excavating and Petroleum LLC to complete permanent closure and abandonment of the three tanks located at six twenty West Madison Avenue in the amount of six thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Questions or comments?
Why is there such a difference in these three prices here? I mean, it's like
Any thoughts on that call?
Almost twice.
Would you like to accept one of the more expensive ones?
It just makes, you know, like makes me a little leery that maybe they missed something in that bid, because the other two were a lot closer together.
Yeah.
So this one's half the price, less than half the price of the other two. So I wasn't asked the same question.
I'll make a motion to approve Shaper Excavating and Petroleum LLC to complete the permanent closure and abandonment of the three tanks located at six twenty West Madison Avenue. Second.
You have a discussion permit?
There's a motion and a second?
I didn't hear.
No, I wanted to ask for discussion permit.
And you want some more discussion? Go ahead.
Well, I just opened the the Shaper Excavating proposal, and its total is nine thousand eighty-six eighty. But there could be parts of this that aren't included in in what we're voting.
Yeah, yeah, so the next gen item is for the cleanup of the site, which is Shaper's, also Shaper's quote.
Okay.
Yep.
No, good clarification. Okay, so there is a motion and a second on number thirteen. Oh, all those in favor? Like, what the heck? Why aren't they voting? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right, discussion and possible action regarding cleanup of contaminated soil near the waste oil tank at six twenty West Madison Avenue.
So during this process, while we started to kind of look at the facility, it was noted that there was some substance in the soil in and around the tank that was not clear where it came from or how it how it appeared. Was it a situation in which somebody had dumped a large amount of oil outside of the facility for some reason? It was unclear, so as we did some additional work with Shaper and our contract building inspector found that there's actually a valve on the tank, a kind of a spout on the tank that is was open for some undisclosed amount of time. So the contents of the tank had leaked out into the soil around that, and we are in the process of determining the whether the Janesville landfill will take that contaminated soil or not. But Shaper Excavation has submitted a quote in the amount of nine thousand eighty-six dollars and eighty cents to excavate and haul the contaminated soil out of that facility with the assistance of general engineering contractors. The D N R has been involved in this since the onset, and they are in support of this approach. So we're fairly confident that once the soil is excavated and removed, the problem will have been mitigated.
Questions or comments? Or a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Shaper Excavating and Petroleum to complete the site cleanup work at six twenty West Madison Avenue.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of the City of Milton representative to the Edgerton Fire Protection District Commission. As you all are aware, February first of two thousand and twenty-three, we will begin in our official capacity representing the City of Milton on the Edgerton Fire Protection District Board. We are the the chairs of the East Side Townships and myself have continued to attend their meetings, and we will continue to attend their meetings so we can be up to speed and offer perspective during the transition changes. However, we're all all the townships and the city are asking for a representative to be appointed. And it would be, I guess, for a year term, this initial one, starting February first. The mayor is recommending the mayor, myself, Anissa Welch, be appointed to this position. In addition, we will need to appoint an alternate too. So anyways, my first recommendation is me, just to keep the continuity during the transition since the chairs and the mayor have been the ones that have been working on this agreement and integration over several months and would appreciate the the ability to continue to represent our respective municipalities. Yes.
I'll make a motion that the mayor be the representative to the Edgerton Fire Protection District Commission.
It's a board.
Board.
All right, it's a commission. It's a commission starting February first.
I'll second to the commission.
To the commission. Thank you for correcting me. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? All right, thank you, I think. But I will do my best to represent our interest on that commission. Do we, I I really haven't heard back from anybody volunteering to be the alternate. It does not have to be a council member. It can be somebody from the community. The official representative that you just voted for me to be does not have to be a council member or the mayor. It can be someone from the community. If you would like some time to think about it, I mean, technically you have till February first. Otherwise, we can get volunteers from the community.
I think that we should have Teresa as the alternative, because she has been followed through these discussions, and she was also the last city chairperson before, while we were doing all this. I think that she did a great job, and I think she would be a good addition.
Is there a second?
Your motion?
Is that your motion?
I'll second that.
Teresa, are you okay with that? Well, you can always I'll do my very best. Okay, there is a motion and a second to appoint Teresa, Elder Person Teresa Rouge as alternate. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. General items, committee reports. What's up? What's up with the committees these days?
I would speak regarding the gathering place, just to let you know that on December, or first of all, last Friday, we had a luncheon for veterans, and it was very well attended. They did a nice job of honoring them, had a speaker come in, and also students from the elementary school come in and do a program for them. We also have the Santa activity coming up for the children in the city, and that's on Sunday, December fourth. Lots of activities for them as well as Santa coming in, and we need volunteers for it. We also need gifts for the children for, you know, prizes for the activities that they have, so anyone that wants to volunteer their time or prizes for the activities, we'd love to hear from you.
Thanks Teresa. Anybody else with a committee report?
Just a reminder that there's a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting scheduled for Monday next week at six o'clock and it's going to be. At the Community House, not here because there is court scheduled for that night.
Alrighty. Anything else for anyone?
Fire Commission meeting is tomorrow here at six.
Okay, staff reports. Kelsey?
Now that budget's approved, we can get moving on tax bills. Today was the last day for delinquent utilities to be paid, so we'll be rolling those and working on tax bills now until they're. Due out by December fifteenth, so before then, but that's it.
Thank you very much. Inga?
I don't think I have anything for tonight.
Okay, Chief?
One of the things I'm working on that I'd like to let you all know about is um working on a um mental health wellness program within the police department. I have a company that I'm going to contract with, hopefully, fingers crossed, to provide annual visits for all of our employees. And um start looking out for their mental health. It's become pretty standard. Um across law enforcement to start doing these now. The organization I'm considering works with at least ten other departments in Dane County. So they're very uh well versed in how this works and um stay tuned.
Thank you. Ashley?
At tonight's teen advisory board meeting, which was right before this, the teens presented a check um to project sixteen forty-nine for two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Um this money was collected from the vending machine that we have in the teen area. Um people love this vending machine. So there's a lot of quarters collected and which will hopefully help the homeless youth in Rock County. And this month is actually National Homeless Youth Awareness Month as well. And then with the passing of the budget, I just want to thank you all for supporting the library as much as you do. I know I'm very fortunate to work in a municipality that support the library, recognize our value. Unfortunately, a lot of libraries don't receive this resp- um support. So uh thank you and I hope we're making you proud.
You are every day, every single day. So thank you. Jenny?
Well, the election's done. So uh everything went smoothly.
Slow class?
The election, the actual election is finished. Actual election is finished. Um and so everything went pretty smoothly. We had minimal amount of wait time. Um we've actually received some good comments on the flow, so very excited about that. Um and we did have one of, one thing I wanted to bring up was we actually had a hundred and sixty-five election day registrations. So Kelsey and Inga, thank you so much for handling that portion of it. They did amazing with that. Um and then on the next part, even though we're done with two thousand twenty-two elections, uh we are gearing up for two thousand twenty-three. So next week, we will have the candidate packets ready. So it's three elder persons, the mayor and a municipal judge. Um so that's exciting with the first day to circulate papers will be December first.
Is that a record? Or do um?
No, it is not actually for election day registrations. The one from what I can see was two hundred and thirty-eight and that was in two thousand eighteen. At general election. Yeah, so I thought that was interesting trivia.
Al?
Interesting. Uh yeah. The budget has passed, the election is over, we've got our first snowfall. And all of those things have worked out wonderfully. Um leaf collection was a pain this year. The guys were still work, guys were still working at it today, even in the snowfall. Um it's just those types of things that uh I don't think the average person understands, sees and appreciates. The amount of time, consideration and effort that goes into leaf collections and elections and passing the budget. And it truly takes a team and um. I can genuinely say that I don't know that there's a better team than what we have right now. It's a great group of people that uh are proud of their work and uh. Most of the time get along and uh really just uh, we couldn't do it. Uh there's not one single person that stands on everybody else's shoulders. We're all on the same page and on the same team, so. Um proud of the group and humbled by their service.
We love municipal government and employees here, more than anybody else does in the whole state. Alright, thank you, everybody. With that, okay, Al, you don't have to sing. You don't have to sing. And I feel like we have not done teen building in a really, really long time. So here is. I didn't hear that. You said you wanted to do two?
He says wonderful. He missed it.
He missed it? You know, I'm gonna write this in as the job description and, and the ordinance of the mayor that they have to do teen building. Okay, so alright, so the theme tonight is this cordless microphone that we are really. Like super excited about in the weirdest of ways. Um but that, this is like something that does excite municipal government. So. The theme is karaoke. We are not gonna have to sing tonight. I am not saying we're not ever gonna have to sing because we have this cool microphone, but we're not gonna have to tonight. So. Think of, write down, type in your phone, take a note. Name at least one. Of the top ten karaoke songs according to Billboard Magazine. In your phone. And if you want hints, you can ask me for a hint on any number, like one through ten. Yes, you can.
Gonna say a song by Journey. Can I, do I have to narrow it down?
I think you need to narrow it down.
Don't stop believing.
That's a really hard song to sing.
I, I put it song at karaoke, so I feel like.
No.
Okay.
That is a good try, though.
I'm gonna guess Friends in Low Places.
Okay, this is according to Billboard, so do not like.
Unfortunately, I thought that one.
So Jenny says that that's the same song she's gonna sing.
No.
Linda?
On the Road Again, Willie Nelson?
No.
Ring of Fire, Johnny Cash?
No. I'd like that one, although I would never sing anything.
I wanna say Man, I Feel Like a Woman by Shania Twain.
Ding 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 ding, number one, number one. Man, I Feel Like a Woman?
Take Me Home, Country Roads, John Denver?
Um no.
YMCA?
No. No, I'm sorry. Maybe it's a wedding song.
I am woman, hear me roar.
No, but that's a great guess.
It's raining men?
Um, nope. It is not. And this is like an according to Billboard. No, but I think that um Al could sing that song. Who is not waiting yet? Mark and Kelsey?
And Paul.
And Paul and Eric, did you wave? No.
Yes, yes.
They're all kind of pop rock.
Oh, okay.
Test. Anything, Paul? Hey, that's a good November song, but it's not on the top ten. Not an Elvis Presley one. Alright, Kelsey and Mark, what do you got for us?
Well, I'm thinking of a song, but I can't think of what it's called and I'm not gonna.
You don't want to hum it for us? Can you think, can you think of what are some words in that?
No, we're not doing that. I don't know. It's just a song that.
It is, no, it is not one. That is a really good guess though, too. Alright, Mark? You got number one and you got number um eight, which was um Friends in Low Places. Man, I Feel Like a Woman, so you got two.
I have a classic, Oom Bop.
It is not, it's not. Yes, ding 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 ding, Bohemian Rhapsody is number four. There is no duplicate artist. No, no. There is a boy band, Ashley, of course there is. That, that's not the, no, that's not it. Backstreet Boys is on here, though. And it is number two. I want it that way. Ding 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 ding, yay!
Was that the song you were thinking of, Kelsey?
I see a trend here.
Is that everybody?
Yeah.
How many is what? How many?
You got four. Okay, that is not on Billboard's top ten, but it is on other top ten karaoke lists. No.
I Will Survive.
I Will Survive, ding 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 ding, number three. You have one, two, three and four. And eight. Yeah. What happened to the moon recently?
Total eclipse of my heart?
Okay, that was great. That is number nine, total eclipse of the heart. Uh no. No. Okay, in the City of Edgerton, what is the liqueur of? Their favorite liqueur? It's made in California. Liquor, liquor. Brandy, it is. Okay, okay, so that is an artist, that is an artist. The artist, it's the artist. The boy is mine. Brandy and Monica, the boy is mine. So ten, nine, eight, so we need seven, six. I know you were. Seven, six and five. Um let's see. No. Okay, so in a band, you have lead guitar and? Okay. No. But it's in the title.
And Meghan Trainor?
This is, it's, you're close. It's, it's by. Super bass. Number seven, that was number seven. Alright, um.
Or maybe I'm going to the right ones, actually.
Okay, um it, the, this artist's first name rhymes with Atlantis. Yes. Yes. Oh, you guys are doing amazing. Alright, alright, now this one I would not have thought of at all. Hey, we are just gonna follow the Marines and we are going to break you down and build you back up next. Okay, um so. Let's see. These two, I believe this is correct, were in A Star is Born. These two were, and?
Bradley Cooper?
And the song is?
Shallows?
Shallow.
Really?
Yeah, that's it, that's it, you. We all need to go to band and choir camp together, apparently. It was tough, it was tough, you know? It totally weird, but hey, you know, next time you're doing karaoke, you know what you should be singing then. So you choose your song for next week that you want to do a group sing. Al will lead it. Um we're gonna have a special meeting next Tuesday to sing. For sure. Okay, next meeting date, December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion to adjourn into song?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Anyone want to sing? No one's opposed. Okay, we're adjourned.